Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zone and Building Committee Regular Meeting, March 9th, 2017. That is my motion.
I'll make that motion.
Any corrections? No corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a report and recommendation for Adventure Park. Matt Alman is gonna give us the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Catalano and the distinguished members of the City Council. Matthew Alman, the Executive Director of the Park District, I'm here tonight along with some of our board members, as well as Steve Doniger with Edge Adventures. What we'd like to do tonight is give you a courtesy review of our White Oaks Park Concept Plan. We started working on this plan over a year ago. It was just recently approved by our board at the Park District, and we'd like to kind of walk you through what we're looking to do with this park in the future. Want to mention that this is a concept plan, so as you have worked on concept plans for the city, you know that what actually gets built and when it gets built is based on a lot of factors in the future. But if you don't have a plan, then you don't have the ability to move forward. So we're pretty excited about what we put together and what we'd like to share with you tonight. We feel the presentation will take about fifteen to twenty minutes at the most, and then we'd like to entertain any questions and hear any comments that you have about the plan. We really want to make sure that what we put forth is in partnership with the community, including the city, because that's part of our mission, is to work in cooperation.
Hey, Matt.
Yes?
Just so we have an idea what we're looking for. Objective, as we see this, is for you to get direction, or what's the end goal? Just so we're clear as we're looking at this.
Sure. Well, we know that if we do anything formable that will require permitting from the city, we want to make sure that we address concerns or issues early on, so that we're not moving forward with something that ultimately the City Council and the city government wouldn't support.
Thank you.
So we want to know where any concerns or issues may lie, so that we can address them and move forward with those in mind.
Thanks.
Thanks for the clarification. So, to begin with, with any plan, we want to have some objectives going into it, and with this one, we wanted to make sure we assess the current condition of White Oaks Park, which is off of Wooddale Road, and what was there currently. We wanted to understand what was there now before we moved forward. We wanted a plan that supported our mission at the Park District, and that was responsive to the needs and desires of the community at large, because that's why we exist. We wanted a blueprint for the future, so that we had a concept that we could work from, and we wanted to make the site more inviting for recreation and bringing unique recreation elements into it, but also embracing the environmental aspects that the park has provided to the community for so many years. The background is that the Park District in 2015 worked through and adopted a master plan for all our parks and all our sites, and what that plan called for is to go park by park and develop a specific concept plan with community engagement. The first park that we chose, and we put a concept plan together, was Central Park. That led to the development of development plans, which led to construction plans, and we believe within the next few days, we'll have the permit from the city and the construction on that park will begin. The second park that we decided to put a concept plan is White Oaks, and the reason why we chose White Oaks second was for a host of reasons we'll cover here today. One is the site needed rejuvenation. It's tired, it's old, and it's not getting the use that we feel the community deserves and would like to see from it. We wanted a concept plan to provide us direction, and we wanted to engage people in that process. And we had an inquiry from Edge Adventures, which is a outfit that has been building aerial adventure parks throughout the United States, most recently in Indiana, with some others slated for the future in other parts of the country, where it brings recreation to people in a unique and new way, and has been kind of getting a lot of momentum throughout the United States. It's been around in Europe for twenty-plus years, and Steve will talk a little bit more about that at the end of my presentation. We put an RFP out to lead the process and wanted to find a firm that we could work with, that we thought could represent the community's best interests, but also that it experienced in these areas. And then we did a site survey, a wetland delineation, and a tree inventory in the process. The firm we chose is Altamenu. Altamenu has done projects throughout Chicago and Chicagoland region. What's unique about Altamenu is they're really creative thinkers, and they're ultimately very sensitive to the environment and the environmental needs, and they're great at community engagement. So they were selected, and they had their engineering group, SMP, work with them on our concept plan. You can see a little bit here, they've done a lot of work in the Chicagoland area with the Chicago Park District, Oak Park, and other areas, including working on dog parks and sites that are similar to the one that we are talking about tonight. The concept plan has had a lot go on in the last year. We started out with our master plan being adopted in last year. We put the RFP out. We had a kickoff in May, so we're almost a year out from when we first started talking about this. We did a lot of site analysis last summer and fall. We held a folk, we held a number of focus groups where we brought community members in to help give us ideas of what they'd like to see from the park. We produced multiple idea concepts and shared them with the community and shared them with our park board. We engaged with city engineers to help us and to look at various aspects of the plans as they developed. We did a tree inventory, knowing that if we're gonna work with Edge Adventures for the aerial elements, we need to know what the trees stock, as well as in the long term, we want to protect the trees that are there. We did a wetland delineation, knowing that there's a lot of wet areas, and then we held a community meeting in July. We refined the concepts last fall. We visited a aerial adventure park in Indiana that Edge Adventures currently operates, and we actually participated in the actual elements and got up in the trees. We wanted to understand what this was really like from the consumer's standpoint. We also invited city staff and city council members to come. We were fortunate enough to have a city staff person come, and we'd be welcome to set that up as well in the future, if you'd want to see firsthand what an aerial park is all about. We did some redesigning. We worked with the second engineers that the city re-engaged. We also attended meetings. We brought this to the park board in December and had some preliminary input. We held a second community meeting, and then ultimately, the board adopted this concept plan in February, and here we are today. Our primary audience that we were really concerned about is the people who live adjacent and around the park, and you can see there that the park has a large residential area off of Wooddale Road, along with a church and other elements. The existing site that appears here, let me see if my pen, fancy pen works, does it have one built in there? Is right here. This is Wooddale Road. The school's down here, just to give you a reference point. That's what the site looked like in 2005, in an aerial bird's-eye view, and you can kind of see the flow of water that generates that direction. That's what it looked like in 2015, so there's really not a lot of change between those ten years, that decade. Some of the site issues that people brought forth in our community meetings, as well as in our engagement with Altamenu, was that people don't feel the park is really inviting. In fact, a lot of people said that they drive by and they didn't even know that it was parkland or that it was available to the community. Some people thought that it was only a dog par, park, and it was really only for people who had dogs. People had a lot of issues with the dog park. The dog park doesn't require a permit. It has rules and regulations, but it's not, it's not a park where many parks, you have to get a permit and pay a fee and meet certain regulations. So that was an area of concern. There's obviously some water that generates in the dog park that people are concerned about. There's a lot of mature trees in the dog park that are threatened by the woodchup buildup and the way that the dog park is laid out, so there was a lot of engagement and discussion and input from people who go there and use it for the dog park primarily. Some residents didn't realize there were trails or even know how to access the trails that are there, and you can see in the prior drawings that aerials, that there's a lot of trails to walk and to participate in. The historic cabin is in poor condition, and the woods are overgrown with invasive species, and obviously, it's not as inviting, including poison ivy and poison oak. The park is underutilized, but the neighbors were concerned about the future of what the park would engage in and how that might affect their homes and their residences. So what Altamenu ultimately came up with is they said, "We want to make an impression, and we want to create an entrance meadow." So if you look at the concept drawing here, and you can see this is Wooddale Road, and this is the dog area, and this is the little parking area, and this is our maintenance, they want to basically say that we want to open up this area where there's a dog park now, move the dog park more to the south, and make this an inviting entrance of the park. So basically, remove the fences, and over time, get a inviting entry meadow that people going by will say that this is a real pleasant and exciting destination and feel that the environmental aspects are maintained. Since the dog park gets a lot of water, we want to relocate it, and we want to improve Again, the dog park was a big part of it, because that's what it gets primarily used for. People felt that we should start regulating it and putting a permit and a fee associated with it, and even the people who use it now for free were advocates of having permits and having fees associated with its use. Obviously, they prefer they be lower for residents, and they be not too, too difficult for them to pay, but they were fine with fees. They'd like the improvements to, you know, include potentially more oversight with cameras and police involvement. They said that one dog park is used more than other. One area's moved more than the other, and the fences are too low, so dogs can get out. So they were looking for a higher fence, improved drainage, and what we're finding out is the best dog parks in terms of protecting the environment and also making it more inviting for the animals, the dogs, is to use crushed granite, as opposed to wood chips. Wood chips, as you can imagine, you know, they decompose, you can't tell in terms of the pets in terms of when they defecate necessarily, and it doesn't make it as permeable and sanitary. So crushed granite was suggested. And then the trees are actually dying out, because the wood chips are starting to choke the trees out, because we're adding more wood chips to deal with the flooding, whereas if we put some barriers around the trees, we can protect them and make it more inviting. There's a strong advocacy for restoring the woods. The woods obviously have a lot of invasive species, so bringing back the natural through natural seed banking and bringing in spring and understory growth with what was really designed to be there and was there in its infancy as a park. To add flowering species, to bring some color and to bring some vibrance to the park, and use the natural topography and the natural elements in a more beautified and appropriate manner. Add more pathways. One of the things that people said, they really enjoy walking the trails, seeing the nature, being out, and using the environment as it's intended, but they want to see more access through some of the wet areas, so some boardwalks to get over the wet areas, and make more pathways so people can get in and through the park. There was a lot of discussion about putting in some type of exercise and to help people more physically use the park, so instead of just the natural passive strolling, and one of the ideas that people, that Altamenu generated and met a lot of support from the community meetings, was a Spartan course that's made more of natural materials and something that could give people destinations within the trails. Here's some examples of using natural elements. More pathways, as I mentioned, for not only hiking, but also potentially bicycle use. There was a desire to make their, to put elements within the park that people could visit and see, but that were naturally based to protect the environment. So environmental art was proposed, and people seemed to think that was a good idea, and these are examples of the things that could potentially be done. It's traditionally been used by the scouts for overnight camping and for camping exercises, so we brought the scouts into our focus groups, and they participated as well, and they wanted to see that maintained, so we wanted to make sure that was part of the park's ultimate concept. There was discussion about the cabin. The board has been struggling with what to do with the future of the cabin. We did do, as part of our master plan, a survey and asked the community, would they want the cabin to be rehabilitated? Would they like to see the cabin torn down? Would they like something to happen with the cabin? And the results were un-conclusive. There was not a long, large sediment in any direction. In the community meetings and focus groups, the same questions were asked, and again, there wasn't any overwhelming support for one direction or another. So we want to be able to study the cabin a little bit more and determine what the long-term benefit or use of keeping it and the costs associated with that, or removing it and using that area in a different manner. One idea was to put a shelter or restrooms for people who use the park, either adjacent to or in replacement of the cabin area. So that's something the master plan called for, as well as this concept plan. And potentially make more use of the outbuildings if deemed appropriate as part of the final plan for development. These are some concepts for potential natural uses and natural elements to give people places to seat, to get people into the park deeper and farther, and to give people interpretive information about what they're seeing and what they're experiencing while they're in the park. Edge Adventures came to us over a year ago, I believe it was last December or January of 2015, 16, and they basically came to us with the concept of putting an aerial adventure course in, which is basically an obstacle course in the trees. Steve, in a few minutes, will give you a little bit of an overview of what that is, but it's basically a ropes course that physically challenges people. It can be something that children can do, young adults, and even senior citizens. There are some restrictions in terms of weight and height and things, but most everybody can do it, and the course is designed to have different levels of physical fitness, so that somebody who's not as physical fit can still get up in the trees, as well as somebody who might really be a workhorse in terms of their physical abilities. This was probably the, this and the dog park was probably the most misunderstood and controversial in terms of the community feedback sessions we held. Our first community meeting last July, a lot of people came with concern and frustration that we were gonna put in a Great America fenced in and charged for people to enter their backyard and their park. And what we found out is that we had more work to do. More work to help educate them to what we were trying to do here, more work to help them understand how they could benefit from it, and more work to make sure that we got community feedback. When we held our second community meeting just a few months ago, we received much more understanding and support for not only the concept plan, but in particular, the aerial adventure course and what it really truly was, where it would go, and what would exist. Some of the things that people were concerned about was that we were gonna bring in thousands of people to the park, that we were gonna have lights and floodlights, that there was gonna be tons of noise, and that it was gonna destroy the environment, and it was gonna destroy the neighborhoods that they passionately live in. We don't believe any of that's true, and we can help adjust your questions and make you understand that tonight with Steve's help. This is an example, and we'll have some more pictures of it to show you what it's like. In fact, one of the things that I was surprised when I went to see it for the first time was, you don't even realize it's there. You could walk into the park and not even realize it's there until it's upon you. This is the same drawing that I have down below, so just to walk you through it really quickly. The concept plan calls for the dog park to be relocated and to be improved and permitted and to use granite. We want to bring in some new trail systems that gets people through the park, including some boardwalks that take people through the wet areas. One thing that's important to note, all this blue, that's where the wetland delineation dictates that the water will penetrate, but it's not as if there are lakes there. Most times of the year, in fact, the vast majority of the time, you wouldn't know that there's wetlands there. You would just know that it might be a little soft or mushy. We do get some water that builds up at times, but it usually filters out pretty quickly. But we wanted to show where we have to work around or where we have to work with the wet areas that the delineation reflected. So we've got trails and some Spartan stops that we can potentially put. We can put interpretive, interpretive materials, some artwork that's natural. This is something that was proposed, to have an entrance here off of Montrose, because right now, the only way to get into the park is here, and the reason this was chosen, because we have ability to have public access, where the entire road here is private. Here, it's private, except for the end of a cul-de-sac, which would take us right into the wetland. We then also have some scouting areas, and the Edge Adventure aerial park area is really just right in here. So you can see, it's far removed from the homes, and it's not consuming the entire site, which is about eighteen acres. This is our maintenance facility, which will stay, maybe some parking improvements, the cabin, and our future shelter and picnic areas, along with the meadow. That's the aerial park zone. It could, you know, obviously could be altered a little bit based on the trees that are used and the elements that are agreed upon, but as you can see, it's not absorbing the whole park. It eats up about three to five acres of the actual park. So now, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve to help you understand a little bit about what is a aerial course, and allow you to understand that. Steve Doniger with Edge Adventures.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
First of all, thank you for having me tonight. It's great to be here. Let me tell you a couple of things about, first of all, let me learn how to work that mat, is that arrow there? All right, good. And I'll launch something, and everybody will spring out of their seats. Let me tell you a little bit about who I am and in our company. We're gonna go through lots of different information and start with all the, all the things that we, we talk about in all our other communities, and what's important to us as a company, and how we become, you know, really great partners with you here in Wooddale. So again, thanks for having me tonight. I've had a great time with Matt, extraordinary leadership that he's had in communications and with his team, and with the board. We're here tonight, I believe we're really prepared to tell you about aerial adventure parks. Look at this slide right here. Let me start with this. Here's what aerial adventure parks are not. What Matt, what Matt said to you is they're not roller coasters. They're not these big metal pieces of towers that are hanging out there. They're meant to work within the canopy, within the forest. That's how we, we build our parks. They're meant to be a walk in the woods that's different than you've ever experienced. You could walk among the trees on the ground, and now we can bring you up in there, into the, into the earth, into the air, rather, and experience something really, really different. This is it. Edge Adventures, our core values, very simple. Edge Adventures exists to enrich lives, period. That's it. Our company, that's our whole value, right there. We're here to enrich people's lives. In order to do that, we have to be, we have to do right by them. We have to be top-notch customer service. We have to be best-in-class when it comes to safety. We have to be best-in-class when it comes to working with the environment, and most importantly, we have to be best-in-class in working as a partner with the communities like Wooddale. We want to make sure that our neighbors, people that, that pay taxes, people that come here to enjoy this great community, that they understand that we're here as well as part of the community. We have to be able to enrich people's lives, and by doing that, we want to be fully involved. So, presentation, I'm gonna talk with you a bit about who we are as a, and I'll introduce my, you know, the team, give you, you know, full background, and when I keep saying "we", it's not just me and, and one other person, I have, there's a whole group of us that are owners in the company. We'll talk to you about our safety standards, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about our partnership, how we develop each of our parks, and we'll talk about why we, why we wanted to be here in Wooddale, why it's important to us, and of course, if there's time allowed, I'll, I'll answer any questions that are appropriate. So, the team. I start with a little over twenty-five years of experience myself. I'm a former park superintendent in Indiana, worked in Illinois, worked in Wisconsin, then my family decided to move to South Carolina. It was snowing, a lot of snow was on our roof. My wife's a professor of education. She said the College of Charleston called me, wants me to come teach there, and during a four-foot snowstorm, I said, "Yeah, let's go. Sounds good." So we've been in South Carolina for about five years, and that's where I started the company. Started the company as a recreation service provider, grew into aquatics management, and then recently went ahead and started into the aerial adventure park. So this wasn't an overnight thing. It's been developed over years and spent a great deal of time. I'm blessed to have a team of people that are specialized people in all kinds of things, from retail, industry development, to customer service, technology. These are all part owners into the company, but everybody comes with a great background of things to share. So we're, we've been able to put together, and I'm really, really proud of things, a company that we can work with specialized safety designs, customer service, business development, finance marketing, so we'll come, we'll come prepared to do, to do a nice job for you. Edge Adventures, our public-private partnerships. Look, we recognize that if everything was, if all the public was able to do everything, they would do everything. It makes a lot of sense coming from the other side of the table and understanding that there's limited tax dollars, there's limited resources, and we have to do the best we can with those. So for us, we look at it and say, "We want to come in as a partner." We believe that if we, if we come in and bring the opportunity to the community, we're able to help improve things within the community and enrich things within the community. So the way we look at our partnerships is quite simple. We come in and say, "We'll make the full investment." Everything that goes into building the adventure park, everything that goes into, if it's my wife, tell her I'm in the middle of a presentation. Everything that goes into staffing.
My wife, that's why she's calling you.
Everything that goes into staffing the adventure park, we take care of all those things, and we build a relationship so that there's a revenue opportunity, so as, as we do well, so does, so does the community. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a payment opportunity to come in and say, "Please allow us to come work on, on, in your parks, to hopefully improve upon the environment, to make an impact on your residents and guests that come to your community, and we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna make that so that it works for both of us in our partnership." Now, the other side of the table is that we lean, we lean over onto the park district and to the community to say, you know, "Please help us market, market the opportunity, and more importantly, please work with us to develop programming." Come up with, you know, we do night hikes, we do bird watching, we do, you know, Cub Scouts come out and do team buildings, all that stuff, and so we're able to expand upon the agency's program portfolio as well. But again, we're not a, come into the community and goodbye, good luck. We want to be here and be part of, be part of Wooddale. So where we're at right now, we have three current parks. We opened last year, we opened Rum Village Park up in South Bend, Indiana. They have a little college up there, maybe you know about it, it's Notre Dame something or other. We're an Indiana family, so we gotta tease Notre Dame, excuse us. We're down in Indianapolis here, in Noblesville, at our Cotewee Park in Hamilton County, and we'll be opening our third park, Deep River Water Park, which is in Maryville, Indiana, and we, you know, so we put a map up here to show where Wooddale would lie in that. Matt said, "We do have other, other communities we're talking to right now. We're talking to Milwaukee, we're talking to places in South Carolina, there's a few other places out there." And our approach is to go and talk to communities that make sense for us as a business. We do a lot of research, we say that the demographics make sense, the facilities make sense, you know, they're, we're aligned in our approaches, and so we don't just go after all these different opportunities, we go after strategic places that say, "This is the best place for us to be." So, let me talk to you about safety. My model's not here anymore, she was coughing back there, I'm traveling, my daughter's on spring break this week, so I had to bore her and bring her up with me to Chicago, where we're originally from. I'm gonna stand up for a second. Safety is the number-one thing that we do. It's the only thing. If we don't do anything well, we're gonna do safety the best we can, and we're the best in the business at doing safety. What we have, and now this is a self-guided aerial adventure park. When you come to an edge adventure park, a lot of these other places, you clip and unclip, and you go from place to place. With us, that doesn't happen. You're on what's called on-bleh a hundred percent of the time. You're in a hundred, you're in a, oh, I'm sorry. Can I hear me?
Yeah.
First time nobody said they couldn't hear me. You're on what we call a hundred percent bleh on the time, all the time. So you come through, and you put on a full-body harness, like, like Lilly has in the picture, So you come through and you put on a full-body harness like Lily has in the picture there and you see the kids on the bottom with the dad. You wear a helmet because squirrels get mad at you sometimes and they throw nuts at you or, you know, there's cables above your head and that type of thing. And you wear gloves, you go through a whole safety demonstration, you have a whole debriefing. But what happens with our course, well, you're clipping and unclipping at other places, this is your clip that you use the whole time. There's no moving parts at all. Stays right on the lifeline a hundred percent of the time. So we could serve kids up in the air from the ages eight and up without any problem. Little guys can go up there. Some of the best stories we have, we had an eighty-year-old great-grandfather and a thirteen-year-old great-grandson at our parks. Now, let me talk about some of the other features we have. We do have zip lines in our courses, but our zip lines are not like mega zip lines like you see in Costa Rica. They're not. They're what are called transition zip lines. The biggest one you'll see is maybe five hundred feet long. You wear a trolley like that that clips right onto the line that can't come unclipped until you come off of it, okay? So those zip lines, as you're going from platform to platform to platform, are part of that. But it's not one of those things, you know, where you're going streaming off, you know, down a mountainside. It's really not. It's one of those things that you transition. So you're going from platform to platform to platform and then going through the whole We also, this park, what's going to be unique, try to put that back in there. I'll let you do that, is we can serve more kids now. At our new park at Deep River, we're building what's called a kids' park and we would like to do the same thing here. So now we can go ahead and have a park that's about four foot off the ground. We could have kids as young as four years old in the park, their harnesses and going through a course themselves. This is a full-family adventure, folks. It's not just for teenagers or for people who want that great adventure for the entire family. What about the trees? We spend a great deal of time with arborists. You guys did a fantastic job and the arborist that did the initial review of the parks and the woods did a great job. We're going to go back through with our arborists as well, all third-party. They come through, we check the health of the tree, we do a treetop review because we're putting platforms into these trees. Now, when you're building on a tree, we're really sensitive to that too. If we don't have trees, we can't have a park. So we make sure that we're building to the highest standards that are out there. We build off of what's called ACCT standards, which is our national standard. It's American Challenge Course Technology. Now, not only do we build to that standard, but we exceed it. And people that build our courses serve on, and I serve on some of these boards as well, serve on safety boards, serve on design boards, really working with each of the states and all the regulations that go into that so that we're building to the best quality care for the trees and for our guests. We make sure that when we're cabling things together, it becomes a fence-like. So when the trees are swaying, it's like having a fence at your yard, they're helping each other. So sometimes trees that normally would get blown over in a windstorm or something like that, they're working with each other to help each other grow. We also have an annual third-party inspection come through. So we're not the ones that are saying, "This is built and built to last." We have other parties that come in, go through every nut and bolt, everything that's out there to make sure that it's built and built away, it should be built, and every year, nothing's changed from that. Plus, we do daily inspections and we do a monthly, every bolt inspection across the table. What we did, this is an example, when we start to do our construction process, this is Deep River Water Park. We'll go out there, and we did a little layout, but I didn't want to bring that tonight because it's been a while and we haven't had a chance to go back through. But we'll lay out an entire course, okay? An entire course means that there's going to be about sixty different platforms or so on this course. So you'll end up with five different courses and each course will have anywhere between twelve, ten or twelve different trails on it for people to go to. So they come in, they get a chance to go for two or three hours, they could climb on different trails, different courses, they pick their own adventure, and it's an opportunity for them to come back time and time again. So we'll do a layout like this, and we'll get in real specifics. We do all engineered drawings, we do all the state standards, we'll make sure that we're building this to the highest qualities and so it's going to last a long time and be something really cool for the community. I would encourage you, if you're on Facebook, look at our Facebook pages, any one of the all have individual pages, Rum Village or Kotewee, Deep River will be new. These are the type of testimonials that we're hearing. We're not perfect. There's always going to be things that people say, "Well, we'd like to spend more time up there," or "We'd like to do something different" or what have you. But by and large, we were blown away about what people said about these courses. So having this, what we're seeing now and coming into our second year, we now have neighborhood parties that are booked, people that are just saying, "Hey, I want to bring out my group." We have birthday parties, you know, birthday party after birthday party after birthday party coming out, and we don't do balloons or clowns, so it's kind of cool. We're finding that we're now doing team-building programs with university, with Notre Dame and with Butler and a few other schools are coming out. So we find that there's a great energy and people really like this because now it's a placemaker for their community, something to be proud about. So we found that all our folks that we're working with find that to be just a great location for them and we feel really great about how responsive we've gotten and feel like, you know, it's the right product for the right marketplace. So I'm prepared to take questions or I'll turn it back over to Matt.
The only thing I want to add is that what the park board wants to do from this point is to get some feedback from the city council and we've put some preliminary funds in our budget to at least to continue to study and position ourselves to go forward with this project in a phased approach. We have in our budget to bring Altamene back to help us kind of take the next step and we know that we can't afford to do everything on that piece of paper. We just don't have enough funds. But what we can do is over time, phase in elements based on where the greatest need is and where the greatest return for the community can come. But we don't want to proceed until obviously we get some more feedback and we're excited about what potentially this park could become. And the goal and our objective is to bring people into the parks. And what I can tell you is that White Oaks is one of our, probably our best opportunities for that and least utilized. We get a lot of dogs there and people who like dogs, but that's it. And we want to bring more people into the park to enjoy it. So we're happy to entertain any questions and help you understand a little bit more about what we've proposed here.
Okay. Thanks for the presentation, great presentation. I just want to, I got a few questions before I open it up. This is no cost to the city, to the residents, this project?
Well, the project will be funded through our current tax proceeds. There's no discussion of like a referendum or anything for that. Edge Adventures, in terms of our negotiations, we're really not at that point where we can talk specifically about anything. But what they've done in their other projects is they provide the capital to build this component, but the park district will have to bring out of there our current reserves or future funding, tax dollars, those other elements. But we're going to live within our means, that's why we want to phase this in.
As far as the adventure park, who's going to man that? Go ahead.
That would be Ed Alderman? That would be Edge Adventures. We do all the staffing. We'll hire a full-time manager and then we hire, for this size park here, we'll probably have on twenty-five to thirty-five individuals. And our medium salary right now is about fifteen dollars an hour.
And as far as, do they have to sign a waiver when they take that zip line?
Yes, sir. They sign a waiver.
And one more question. As far as in the wintertime, is all the equipment taken down?
No, sir. The equipment is up there year-round and we'll operate, the operating season typically, and we say this in general, it's about a golf course season. So in the spring, when the weather turns appropriate, we'll do weekends in groups and then we'll go all the way through early fall. So typically before Thanksgiving is when we'll close down for the season. We'll do weekends and holidays while school's in session and then during the summertime, we'll go seven days a week.
And like you said, you guys check the equipment out constantly?
Every day, every day, the entire course is checked out. Every day, every piece of equipment before it goes on, a person's body gets checked out and gets checked when it comes back in.
Okay. Okay, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I just have a couple of questions. Your community meetings that you said you had in July twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, and I believe you had another outreach meeting. How did you, how did you reach, how did you reach out to the people in town to have that meeting? Or did you just focus on the ward it was in?
Well, we did all kinds of marketing through our normal means with social media and through posters and flyers and banners, but we specifically targeted the neighborhood and made sure that they received a flyer at their homestead. And we chose a distance, I can't remember, you know, a block or two surrounding the entire park. We started promoting it, you know, three or four weeks in advance to try to get the word out. The first meeting had probably fifty, sixty people and the second one had about half that, a ten.
Okay, I have a couple more. The other question I have is, I know you're doing Centennial Park now with the first phase of it, or-
Central.
Central Park. Now, last time you came to us and you said you're going to do the second phase down the line. So when will that second phase, so if you launched this program, where would that second phase come in play?
Well, the first thing we want to do is bring Altamene to help us identify the actual costs and to put together a phasing plan. And then we have to match it up against our ability to afford it. The park district is going to be releasing some of its debt in the next few years because of the rec center and everything that's paid off. So it'll really be up the board to determine how they want to fund this over time and if they want to reissue debt. There won't be any increase to the taxpayers because obviously if you're pulling debt off and you're issuing new debt, it should be equal. But it's really going to be a decision of the park board to decide how quickly they want to phase it in or not. So that remains to be seen.
Okay.
Go ahead, one more.
And then the other question is, are you going to have to come in for variances for any of this project or?
Go ahead, Ms. Chrissy.
Or not, or?
Yes. So the park will need a special use approval, similar to what we did for Central Park. And so the purpose here is to see if there's any big issues that would prevent the park district from moving forward in preparation for the special use request.
Okay.
Okay, Alderman Art Woods? Oh, Roy Wesley, I'm sorry.
In that response that you just said, could you get some answers on that since you've just seen the presentation and forward that information to me about if the zoning would fit in there for the variance, what variance it would require?
Go ahead.
If I could clarify, no variance at this point would be required. It would just be a special use approval. And from everything that we are aware of with the proposal, there shouldn't be an issue. It appears as though the park district is addressing all of the concerns that have been raised by the adjacent property owners and other community members. So really, at this point, it's just to see if the council has any major concerns outside of that.
Okay. I have a couple more. I love your first presentation here with the paths and everything else. It's great. I don't have enough information on this edge adventure. I understand that you just said you can't go into the cost of it and you haven't talked about that and I understand that. My question is, you talked about in your budget and stuff that you're putting money aside for. Could the city use TIF money for this?
Chrissy.
This is outside of a TIF district, so TIF funding would not be eligible for this property, project.
Okay. But the city could also go into hotel tax on this possibly?
Go ahead.
It absolutely could be a draw in terms of economic development and trying to attract, you know, other-
It's too early.
It certainly could be a draw. So yes, I mean, the city could consider using perhaps some economic development funding for something related to this.
Might as promote tourism, so.
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Jacob? Alderman Woods, I'm sorry.
Where's the love? First, I'd like to say, great presentation and kudos to the park district and their board and being proactive to bring something like this. This is really kind of cutting edge for the community and does kind of create another draw, much like Topgolf is. So you'll have one on one end of the town and a feature on the other end of the town. So my only question is, how fast can you get this going? And as Alderman Wesley already pointed out, I'm sure that we'd be interested in maybe once this gets further along, seeing what we could do to help.
Yeah, that's a good question and thank you for your comments. The park board has a meeting next Tuesday where they were going to discuss the budget and within that budget is the engagement of Altamene to come back and help us study the specific costs and the phasing possibilities. They envision that being about a two-month process. Meanwhile, if we feel that there's support and favorability to move forward, we'll start, you know, some serious negotiations with Edge Adventures and they could talk specifically about their window of building and construction and development. But kind of on a preliminary level, what we talked about is that ideally, we'd like to be able to get people into the park using the elements that could be phased in next year at this time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
I have several questions as well. Alderman, Lucina and myself did meet with, did meet with Mr. Alderman because we had several residents call us and they were concerned. And I think, you know, as we told you, Matt, the more information you give them, I think the happier they'll be. So really haven't heard any complaints since then. One thing I did hear somebody make a couple of comments on is you did say there was not going to be any lighting in this, like football-type lighting or anything like that. Is that going to be the case? Because I did have a few residents say, "Well, yeah, you're going to let them in and then all of a sudden they're just going to put the lights up. You can't do anything about that then." So I just wanted to find out about that.
Well, the plan does not call for any lighting, but we do feel that there's probably going to be a need for some security lighting and we'll be working with the police department in particular to make sure that we have ample lighting for security purposes. Edge Adventures has not proposed any lighting of their course. They have mentioned that they do night course activities on occasion, not as a regularity where people get headlamps and can go up, but we're not putting up any big poles with lighting to encourage night use other than where it can protect the key areas of any park that you would, like we did at Central Park. We put a light in the middle.
Next question would be, when Alderman, Lucina and I actually walked to talk to some of these residents because they seemed like they were so concerned, some people brought up, and I think you had told Alderman, Lucina and myself that you have no record of this, but somebody else made the comment the other day to me from our stormwater committee that that was, that property was donated to the park district and that it's some type of wetland and you're not supposed to technically do anything, legally you guys can't, cannot do anything with parts of that. Have you, do you have any documentation to that effect or?
What was, what was mentioned at one of the community meetings was that there was a covenant over the donation of the land that prevented us from doing anything to it in the future other than what it currently, its current existence. We have not been able to find in our records or the county records anything that dictates that. We obviously have to follow regulations either within the city or county as it relates to wetlands and environment and uses and that's why we brought Altamene and their engineers in and met with the city engineers to make sure that we could work with those regulations. And Kelly can obviously speak to some more specifics, but-
Right.
-there is more work to be done to make sure we comply.
And if I can just clarify, in terms of the wetland and the aerial adventure park, it actually is, there is very little footprint on the ground itself to impact the wetland, but that is very, a very sensitive area and sensitive topic. So that's where I know that the park district and Edge Adventures is very cognizant of that. And so the construction methods and things like that are taking all of that into consideration because there are some other issues if you're displacing wetlands. And so that's something that the park district is building into their plan.
Next question?
Uh, last question. I'm the city liaison for our Stormwater Committee and they were kind of upset that they knew nothing about this, they apparently found out. Could you maybe come to one of our Stormwater meetings and just let them know what this is about? Just because our last meeting, a couple of them were upset that nobody told them anything about this and I explained to them, this is Park District, not city. So maybe if you could possibly do that, that would help the committee.
Absolutely, we want to come to whomever will listen and, and educate people at, at large. So happy to, you know, spend a night to, to meet with anybody. Again, it's a concept plan, so this isn't a development or construction plan. But as we go forward, if there's any groups that you want us to be before, we'd be happy to do it. I am an empty nester now, so my wife loves having me out of the house.
Mayor?
A couple of things. One, you mentioned the wetland delineation, so any concerns about flooding or causing any flooding to any residents are going to be addressed. But let me just tell you, for as long as I can remember, since my kids were tiny, the only thing they ever said to me was, "Why doesn't Wooddale have anything for the kids? This seems like a great project, even the one three feet off the ground or whatever. The kids are going to eat this stuff up, the people are going to love this stuff." And right, there's not a TIF area, but tourism would be where the money would come from if.
Alderman Messina?
One question, one comment. Question, there was a few questions that came out around the insurance, if you could just talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, in preliminary discussions with Edge Adventures, basically they're going to be leasers of the area and responsible for the entire operation. So there would be an agreement that would basically relinquish all liability to them. They could speak to their insurance and, and their safety systems. Our research is that they are, you know, what they say in terms of safety, but the liability is placed on them. We have tort immunities and, and other protections, but through the agreement that will be drafted by, obviously, our legal counsel, that will be deflected entirely over to them.
And just to wrap up my piece, thanks again for involving us, both the Park District and the Director. Because we did get a lot of feedback and, and it was really a, a manner of just educating some of the residents on what it is. And so just some key things to remember. We saw three hundred and thirty-four feet from the nearest house. Easy way to think about it if you're asked, one football field away from the nearest house. That was really important for a lot of people. There's no lights. Alderman Woods nailed it. It's an anchor on the other side of town, right? And so now we're starting to drive people from Topgolf. And then we have the other side of town and we have this with the idea that eventually we move into the middle, right? So very, very, very excited. You know, I, I would, I would challenge you guys to really think about how we leverage the, I forgot what we call it, but the historic cabin to really leverage, in my opinion, a huge opportunity for hosting parties, right? So team building, city events, I mean, partner with Topgolf. We have, I know you guys have a great relationship with Topgolf for some opportunities there because I think their, the city's hungry for it and it's a new idea. So hopefully you guys will consider some of the hospitality around it too. And that's it, start as quick as you can and we'll help where we can, thank you.
Alderman Serrantino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, basically I want to concur with my esteemed colleagues up at this panel and thank you, Matt, and your board and your partner here for the valuable collaboration that it took to put this dream in the works. I think as a city, this is what we're looking for. This is going to be part of our wow effect for the city of Wooddale. And as far as the children, they'll have a place to go. And personally, I thought it was just a dog park. So kudos to you, I assure you and your board that your glass is more than half full, so give those. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman, Roy Wesley.
Okay, Matt, I heard you, I'm, I see you hear the goal from the council here, which is great. How soon can we get this going? And if it wasn't the money problem? How fast could you get this up and going? I know it's a concept plan. Within two years?
Well, I, I, I think our hope is that we can be putting people in elements of this park and Edge Adventures in particular next year at this time. It's going to take some cooperation, it's going to take some effort on our part, it's going to take some board discussion and approval. And obviously our consultants' help. But, you know, the board up to this point, what, you know, I don't want to speak specifically for them, but overall, they've said they don't want to miss the opportunity. You know, they're building additional parks in other parts of the country, we want to be on the front edge, not on the back edge of these things. I think long-term, all the elements of this park are something that's going to take, you know, a decade. But the aerial adventure components, some new trail systems and dog park improvements are things that I would hope that we could be seeing sometime in 2018.
Do you have a, a projected plan of how much it costs for your first plan that you presented?
No, no, and that's where we've got in the budget to have Altmanu come in and help us put specific costs to it. Part of it's going to depend on the size that things are and the scope of those things. So for example, if we put up a very basic chain link fence around the dog park, it's going to cost X. But if we put a more ornamental fence, it's going to cost X. If we put one like we have now, it's going to be less. But we want to make sure that what we put up is attractive, is resilient and appropriate for the community. So we want to really take a hard look at making sure the elements, but we're going to have to phase things in, we know that we can't do it all. And we want to obviously put a priority of things that the community can easily access and use. And we want to provide for all elements of the community. We feel that the passive trails and stuff can bring the, the senior citizens into the park, obviously the dog lovers into the park, the adventure seekers of all ages. So I would advocate to our Park Board to make sure that we do a little bit of everything so we're covering all age ranges as part of the first phase.
Go ahead, last question.
I really would like you to, the, the city would, I would like the city to work with you on coming up with, what your cost would be for the whole project and see where we stand on it and see if we could join a partnership with you on funding, help fund this, not a hundred percent, but help fund it to bring it to life. I mean, we got a, we got a golf course, a forest preserve golf course, state, a state of art, we got Topgolf, northern part of DuPage County. Keep it in northern DuPage, right here. So.
That's part of who we are is to partner and to, to work collaboratively and that's why we're here today. So we welcome that opportunity, we feel strongly about that. I've had great working relationships with the staff here at the city and will continue to do that. And we'll work as diligently and as quickly as we can, but we want to comply, we want to make sure the community is engaged throughout. Thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
One question I didn't ask was about the fees. Normally, like, what's the charge? Like, do you use this as by the hour, is it by the day, or how does that work?
Need to, a couple of things on fees. So our fee structure right now, if you look in our website at our other three parks, we have an all-day pass that you can come climb all day for seventy-nine dollars. But we have, we've changed our model slightly, we actually have, so you're buying time, not buying number of courses. So there's a, a two-hour option and there's a three-hour option. A two-hour option is about thirty-nine dollars for an adult, twenty-nine dollars for children under thirteen. And then three hours is forty-nine and thirty-nine. And with that, on top of all that, we, we do discounts, specials for groups, for packages, for birthdays. And then candidly, and we'll work with, with the, we've made a commitment to the participating as well, there are other facilities. We established a scholarship fund. We don't want anybody, again, our, our model is to enrich people's lives. So we're going to find a way, if there's, if there's a group or community members that need additional assistance with those type of fees, we're going to find a way to get, get them up into the trees and, and have an experience.
Okay, one, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One, I had one thing and, you know, obviously we'll be negotiating with Edge Adventures, but one idea that's been thrown out and seems to be something that's resonated is maybe to have selective community days throughout the year, you know, maybe one, two, three, where we can give a, a discount to anybody who can prove residency. We're conscious of the fact that, you know, the price point on this can be expensive for some, but we also feel the benefit and the gain from the experience. And it's like anything, you know, you don't, you don't go to Great America, you know, five or six times a year, but you do try to get there because of the great experience. And we do have a scholarship program too, so we can help supplement that as well.
Okay, yeah. Alderman Woods?
Thank you, I was just going to say, have, have you guys reached out to DuPage, reached out to DuPage County at all to see if they, or if there are any funds or grant money or something? Is this is a kind of a, you know, centerpiece project that maybe they would like to get involved with it also?
You know, at this point, we haven't really reached outside to sources for assistance or help outside the city. But we're definitely going to be looking far and wherever we can to, to make this happen. So if you have contacts or suggestions, we welcome them. We're hoping that the state resolves some of its financial troubles, I know that's probably a long shot, but, you know, we have spoken with our, with our representative and our senator and, and hoping that we can have opportunities if the state can work through some of its stalemates.
Okay, no more questions, so we need consensus on the special use?
No.
Direction, no, just, just a direction to continue?
Just a blessing.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much, appreciate being here.
Next is items to consider for future meetings. UDO text amendments, parking non-conformities overlay June 2017, and Forndale corridor rezone in winter of 2018. Any other items to consider for future meetings? No, then I ask for a, make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
I'll call the Public Health and Safety Committee to order. Make the minute taker note that two people have left. And the motion approved minutes for March ninth?
Second.
Second, all in favors?
Aye.
Polls, motion carries. Port of regulation, replace the squad car four, four oh four. I will make a motion to approve the purchase of a squad car.
Second. Not finished with his motion.
I'm not through with my motion, please. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a squad car, a vehicle to be not, 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 not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven, four, right?
Twenty-seven, two, twenty-four.
Right. So that will be my motion. Do I have a second?
Yes, I second it.
Questions?
Just one question, did this fall into a score, you know how we score all our fleet? And if so, what was that score?
Go ahead.
Okay, yes, it did, the score is now at seventy-seven percent on that. And this vehicle's at eighty-one thousand miles, it'll be over ninety thousand by the time we replace it. And just a note, we had had two other vehicles originally in the budget to be replaced this year. This one we had pushed back and we're actually pushing two more back to next year because what we're finding with these utility vehicles that we're getting now is they're lasting a little bit longer and the maintenance on them has been better than the Crown Victorias. So we're kind of adjusting our schedule to push them, push them out a little bit further, so.
Brad?
Just because I got a question from a resident on this. We are eventually moving to all utility vehicles, that's the plan, right? Just confirm. And then what's the standard, because that number looked low and I had that in the report. Can you spend just one minute talking about that? Or maybe Matt?
Yeah, I, I can touch briefly on it. The, you know, they take into account the original purchase price of the vehicle, the mileage, the body condition, interior condition, how much the service orders have been to make repairs on it. And like I said, what we're seeing with these SUVs that get the same gas mileage as the smaller sedans is they're lasting us longer and the repairs are costing less. We did test drive these smaller vehicles at one point and you'll see most towns haven't gone with those. And the ones that I know that have, they're, now that they're three or four years old, they're getting rid of those and going into the SUVs. There's just too much equipment nowadays. You really need the SUVs for taller people, if, if that's the case. And then with the computers and the lights and the siren and the radars, we just find out we need the SUVs.
And the, and the only reason why the price might be a little lower that, that you brought that up is because we go out of state purchase with all the misful-
Like a joint?
Right.
Joint funding or?
Right, and then, and you, and then there's always a deadline that you have to purchase them or else you are not going to get that reduction. So that's why we do this.
Thanks.
So I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Polls, motion carries. Items to consider for future meeting, the, D U J I S report writing software.
For next sign?
Uh, it'll be very shortly, the IGA just came through, the mayor's managers yesterday, I believe. They're going to provide some feedback and then the working group for the state's attorney will put it out for final approval. So that's coming soon, we've been waiting for them to finish it.
But we know how-
Not the mayor, the, the working group with the county and state's attorney's office, so.
Okay.
So that'll be coming in the near future now.
Okay.
Real quick, this is going to feed into DuPage County, right? So there's no data cycles with the departments?
Right.
That's correct, there, actually, there's one large department in the county that's not going to be going to this. They're currently on their own system anyways, but almost every DuPage agency is going to be on this system. And the sharing of both report writing and data and booking data, but also crime analysis is going to be a part of this too, so.
That's awesome, thanks.
Okay, any other items? I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order, let the minute taker reflect that Alderman Wesley is not here and-
And Peter Jacob.
And Alderman Jacob, it's on Savadical now too. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March twenty-third, twenty-seventeen. Do I have a second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Next, decorative sign post purchased from Brandon Industries, Inc. of McKinney, Texas in an amount not to exceed a hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, that is my motion.
So move.
Do we have any questions? No question. Alderman Messina?
Cost for post or cost for posts with signs?
Mr. York?
This is cost for post, cost for signs is a little bit later in the agenda, we'll talk about that. No installation is included in this cost of that, will be coming to you in around June-ish for installation.
That's something very easy, question. I do have a question.
Okay, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So I did talk to Mr. York about this earlier today and, and I agree, we need to buy the posts and all that. The only thing that I suggest to him, if we don't get them installed in one time, I don't want to store all these extra posts in the public works building or, or outside in the winter. So I'm hoping we could, we could, if we can't get them all up in one time, that we, we have them stored for us and when we want them, they'll send them out. Mr. York?
Yes, just so everyone's aware, these posts are fifteen to twenty weeks out. So once we even, if we place the order, say the beginning of May, it's going to be September or so before they'll actually be in. So once we place the order, we can negotiate with the company to say, you know, if we'll take, we'll buy them all now, but if you could ship us fifty percent of them as soon as you have it and then we'll ask for the rest of the fifty percent when we're ready for it. We can do some negotiating with them, I don't know how that'll work with them, it should be okay, but we should be able to work out something.
Any more questions? No, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Next, an agreement.
Yes, Mr. York? Can I ask if we change the agenda order a smidge and go to?
No.
Okay, fine.
I always wanted to say that, no. Do you, are you looking to move up the water main port?
Yes, if we could.
Okay, so that we can, we don't have the attorney sitting here all night? I was trying to punish him, actually.
Charging per hour.
Mr. Mermis?
Yeah, I just apologize to the council, there was-
There was a software error pointed out, so apparently there was no memo in the iPad versions, so you had a hard copy in front of you. Again, apologize.
So moving on to item H, report on water main extension to provide potable water for Five North, 021 North Wooddale Road. Mr. York, are you gonna say something? Do you have something to say?
Sure. I'd be more than happy to say something.
You don't have to if you don't want to.
Oh. Okay. So currently, we've got three parcels, or, excuse me, four parcels along the old Five North, 021 property, which is this area, turn this off, make sure this works, this area right in here, doesn't work, right above basically that purple, light purple box, in this area right in here, there are three new parcels that are gonna be built upon and one parcel is gonna be used for detention. We were requested by Mr. Zubak and the homeowners, the possibility of placing a water main in there. City code requires that all water, new water main installation be looped. So that means to connect it on both ends so that it's not a dead end system anymore. So right now, what, basically, there are, there's a caveat in the code that says that if the city is looking for water main, or there's a provision for future expansion of water main. So if the city is at one point thinking about that we're going to extend a water main to where a dead end is at, a dead end can be installed. So right now, we're, there's basically two questions. So the first question is, do we wanna loop it or not? To loop it is, we've got estimates under about a 325, 350,000 range to go from Elizabeth Drive. It'd have to come off of this side because this is a ten inch line, this is only an eight inch line. So we come off this ten inch line, go to an eight inch, come all the way down here to where the current water main stops right here. Or if we don't believe that there'll be extension in the future, are we going to allow just this, extension of this dead end off of the Juniper part, off of South Cedar, over to Wooddale Road? So there's basically the two questions that we have to ask for guidance from the committee this evening.
Well, let me make a statement before to help since we, we just got this paperwork this evening, and I'm sure a lot of people are looking at it, wondering what's going on. So essentially, just to, to sum it up, right now, that water line dead ends at the start of the front three lots. So essentially.
Yes, right here.
What, say that again?
Yes, correct. You're correct. It stops right here, and we are, there's, the proposal is to extend the line from where it dead ends now out to Wooddale Road.
Correct.
Or to require it to be looped, which would extend it all the way to Elizabeth Drive.
Right. And, and as you put out there, the prices are like, you know, over 300,000. And that's just the estimate, and getting into that intersection, it might wind up costing a little more.
Mm-hmm.
And essentially, all we're doing is, is extending what is already a, a dead end, I mean, 200 feet to the, the corner.
Right.
This way, at least when the people along Wooddale Road wanna tie in, the next guy can move it the next hundred feet. The next guy can pick up the ball and move it the next 200 feet, and eventually, it'll get done. This is really in keeping with what we've been trying to do, being proactive with both annexing people into the property and getting everybody hooked up to city sewer and water. The sewer had already run, been run down the street, the water should have been run down the street. I guess I could make the argument it was a shortcoming of the city not to continue it down the street, but this is where we're at today. So that's kinda my piece to fill you in a little bit. And Mr. Zubak wanted to say a few words.
Can you do a handout, too, sir?
Sure, absolutely.
Let's turn it loud, it's okay. We should get this added.
We didn't get anything added. We didn't get the city stuff added.
It's my understanding, Mr. Wesley, Eugene, that it allows us to give us the night of, he usually likes to work on the fly. Does this work?
All right, thank you. Very briefly, there's a three lot subdivision that was previously approved. It's, unfortunately, it's not gonna get built. The, the map I just gave you, the two blues show you where the water is. The red is where my client would like to extend it. The yellow is what the UDO says you have to do in order, any new development has to loop the water. That makes it cost prohibitive. We worked very closely with staff. Jeff has been great. Staff has been great. Matt's been great. The cost to do that loop is over $300,000. We thought about doing a special service area where we would pay more than our share, but that would still require the city to probably put out $275,000 now in the hope to ever get that back if that larger piece ever gets developed. It might not ever get developed, and the city's put that money out with that, with never getting it back. Recapture agreements are never guaranteed to get the money back. The development next to Elizabeth Court was approved at one point, never got developed because of the economic times, eventually went into foreclosure, and we lost that to the Bensonville Park District. I originally represented a developer getting that developed, and the council said this was kind of one of the entrance ways or gateways to Wooddale, common theme. This can be the gateway to Wooddale with three lots that are fifteen, or one, or 100, 100 by 115, or 150. So they're 15,000 square foot lots. These are big, large lots. Your taxes you're getting right now are roughly $5,000 per lot. That's gonna be increased dramatically with three single-family homes. So it's a way to get these three lots developed without the city putting any money out, just giving direction to Matt to say, we're okay with extending it. Back in the old days, extensions were done all the time. I think the UDO, this is one of those unintended consequences. Yes, in a perfect world, it's better to loop the water, but it's not gonna harm anybody in the first or second word by just extending this another 345 feet that my clients will pay for. So the city, nothing's gonna come out of the city pockets, other than you'll get the increase in assessed value in real estate taxes once the properties are improved. Thank you.
As always, great job. Sounds so great. Matt, can you tell us what's at risk? If he does, if we do allow it? Mr. York.
Well, what's at risk is that it, we continue to have dead ends.
Right.
One of the goals of the UDO is to get rid of dead ends.
Right.
So the only added expense on the city's side will be that we'll have to flush that line more often than we would another, a regular line that's looped, because it'll be a dead end, and there'll be stale water that gets to the end of that line. And if there's a, a future main break on that line, that.
We're responsible for it.
Well, we would be responsible for it. I mean, I'm sure there, if it's built, it'll be needed to the city. I mean, that's normally how it would work, and become a public utility. And there'd be no other way to provide water to that, to the residents on there. But on a main break, you always have that issue anyway. So, so I guess the two, the two things that it would be, it's, it's against the UDO, and that's a decision that we can make, and it's a dead end.
So, Alderman Messina.
One follow-up question that we all seem to have. So which street is this right here? I see Cedar, but which street is this?
That street is part of the original development. That'll be a private drive. There was, it was a four lot subdivision, three lots for single-family homes, one for detention, and then a private drive. So it's part of the development, a private drive has to be installed. It's not a dedicated street. Those three houses are responsible for maintenance of that private drive.
Alderman Messina.
So it would be a private drive, it wouldn't be city-owned street?
Correct.
Okay.
The city would own, yeah. And then just to counter what Mr. York said, the city already has a dead end there, so the city already has those obligations to drain the water, and for water main breaks, that's not changing. From an engineering point, it's always better to loop. You gotta balance that versus getting the development, 'cause you can't put that looping requirement on the backs of three lot owners. It's just not, it's not fair.
Mayor, please. Did you have something to say?
Yeah. As far as the, the water main, once you put in the water main, he's gonna build it according to our specs. So if they do that, it should last over 50 years.
Fifty years.
And eventually, those people on Brookhurst Lane gonna want water, and you might shoot it straight across. At some point, and at some point, it's gonna get looped. Great, let's move forward.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Matt, those two houses in the back there? What are they? Are they on a well? Or are they on city water?
They're on.
Mr. York.
They're on city water. They have water that comes off of Cedar that, that ends at the end of the, the house at 403.
Okay. Because there is a hydrant over there, right?
Yeah. So we take it, so what will happen is they'll extend from where the hydrant's located, where the end of that pipe is at, they'll extend from there all the way to Wooddale Road, place another hydrant in there, one, maybe two, depending on where we decide to put things. And then we'll be able to, that'll be the dead end, and then basically, that'll be the major flush point, will be right there at Wooddale Road, to flush out that whole, the line.
Over by Wooddale Road.
At Wooddale Road.
Okay. And the private road is maintained?
By the private people.
Which?
It's not us.
Which, right now, I've had complaints from over there that is not.
Three hundred or something.
During snow times and stuff like that.
Two seventy-five.
It's all the more reason to get them to build the home so they're there and they can actually take care of the road, probably would help that. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I'll make the motion approve.
Second.
Alderman Jacob.
Matt, just a quick question on this. Now, if, we did what Marshall was saying, Mr. Zubak, what would the cost to the city be there? They would be paying for it versus the looping?
Mr. York for it.
Yeah, as far as, as I recall from our negotiations, as long as they could go to the end of that and stop without looping, that'd be 100% on the, on the backs of the homeowners. If we were going to do the looping, then they would only go up to 25%, and then we would be responsible for the rest of it. So if it's just to, if it's just to the dead end, the extension of the dead end, then the city will, should not have any outlay. They would just have, we would, the only requirement would be to do plan review and make sure that they're installing the pipe in accordance with our law, our, our rules and our, our, how we do things.
I guess, what's the cost to them looping versus doing the dead end?
The looping is about $375,000 total.
I'm talking to the residents.
They would pay about 25% of that, which would be, I'm not a mathematician, but let's say 100,000, 90,000 dollars. And if, to just do the one section, what, about 60? Who are we using that, about the 60,000? 50? You know, they're gonna, you know, put garden hose out there.
But you have to, like, if you stick to the UDO, we would pay 100% of 375, and we're just saying, we just can't do it. Our proposal was to do some kind of cost sharing with the city, but I know those public work projects get eaten up very quickly, and this wasn't a high priority to extend water and circulate water here. So I said, why don't we just allow us to further the extension, and you guys can address that later in the future? And not stepping on Mr. Alderman Wesley's toes, but was your motion to approve direction to allow the extension?
My motion was to dead end it at the street, let them come all the way up. Do not loop it.
No looping.
No looping.
Right. No looping. That's my motion. Sunny here.
Yes, that was my understanding, too. You're going to Wooddale Road, and that's my second.
Alderman Messina.
So I'm all for it as well. I just, I know I sat up here a couple of years ago when I first started, and I remember seeing you guys, one of the first people. When are you gonna build? If we allow this, and you're saving all this money, when are you gonna actually build on those lots?
We had, we had.
You need to come up here.
Well, thanks for allowing us the opportunity to sit right here and talk to you guys. We had architects lined up as soon as we got the property. And two years ago, we had plans and everything was developed. However, we had to let go of all that and, and, and lieu of not getting approved, you know, for the project. So we've lost tax money for the last couple of years that we paid out of pocket and architect fees.
Could you please state your name for?
Yeah. Giovanni Andino.
Giovanni Andino?
Andino. A-N-D-I-N-O. Currently, I live on 304 Harvey. So arts work, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a great opportunity, we just wanted to get a couple of homes, you know, built for our families and, you know, continue to live in Wooddale, so.
So I think the short-term goal is two of them will be built in the near future, and then one of them is probably of a, of a long-term project. The original three owners, one of them, Bernard Rivera, unfortunately, relocated Elmhurst, so he won't be building on his, but he has somebody else that wants to come forward and build on his in the short term. Giovanni is more of a, probably a wait-and-see project, 'cause things change with family and everyone, good news is, he's not moving out of Wooddale, but he's probably not gonna build himself, but he's certainly gonna look to have somebody build there as soon as possible.
So commitment for how many of one, from my understanding?
We'll build a three.
I hear you're shuffling, but.
We'll build a three.
We will build a three.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have.
And then there will be that one that'll be detention?
Yeah, then.
That fourth lot that I saw a long time ago, right?
Yeah, four is a detention area in the road itself.
Okay.
One property.
And at one point, I'm sorry, there was discussion about maybe doing an entranceway sign there, 'cause I think that's really the start of Wooddale, and you might be able to do something near that detention base and to have another Wooddale entrance sign in the future over there. Maybe dwarf the Bensonville Park District sign.
And we are trying to build within the next six to nine months. I mean, obviously, we, we have a house we have to sell. We're thinking of putting it on the market now, because it's, you know, spring market. So we're shooting, we're shooting for that. As soon as we sell, which we're pricing it low, we're, you know, we're looking into, we have somewhere to live, but we're looking into starting, you know, start the building process.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Thanks, guys.
Before I call the next one, I wanna make a statement. I mean, the, this is, I think Alderman Messina summed it up when he, when he said he saw this or heard, was watching this when he first got on, right? So this is two years old already. The question of when would they build? The question of when would they build? They would have built twenty-four months ago if we would have gave them the go-ahead to do it. So we, we've exhausted the other options mathematically and economically, and we're left with this. If we don't do this, there are going to be three empty lots, and we're going to be having this conversation two years from today, so I just say that we move forward. Alderman Catalano, do you have a question?
If we would have continued with the water main, how, potentially in the future, how many people can tap into that line? Do we?
Mr. York.
Well, I think, I think what, like the mayor said, going down Brookhurst and then coming across Uneasement and tying into that line will probably be the more beneficial thing, because then you can grab all those people going down towards Treatment Plant. So without doing, without going back and counting them, I mean, well, we got one, two, five, six, ten, ten, twelve homes there. There's, yeah, and then if you want to extend it south of there, then you get into, I mean, where are you going to go? I mean, if we go all the way down to Oak Meadows, and then we've got to turn it and go all the way back down to, to, you know, the Whispering Springs or...
Whispering Oaks.
Whispering Oaks area, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of pipe in the ground that's not going to serve as a whole lot of people. So the biggest benefit would be to, to get the people on Brookhurst on board, come down Brookhurst and then, then go straight across and tie in, tie in on the east to west side underneath Wooddale Road. That's, that'd be the best thing for, for the most, most bang for our buck right there.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, if there's no further questions. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Next, an agreement to amend the design and construction management contract with H.R. Green for Harvey Street project in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, approval of a contract with ALAMP to perform an emergency patch on Addison Road due to water main issue in an amount not to exceed, exceed eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That is my motion. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Oh, you had a, you weren't quick enough. You're, you're, go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
On, on the, reading the contract, it says work to be completed in two thousand, must be completed in two thousand seventeen, it is, so they have a year to work on this, basically?
Mr. York.
No, I've talked to the people from ALAMP. Basically, as soon as the asphalt plants are open, they're going to get in there, get this job done. They're the same people that are working on the Forest View project, so they'll just slide over there, send two or three guys over there, and they'll bang that part of it out. And then it'll be done in two phases, it'll be a concrete phase and then an asphalt phase, so we should be able to get this buttoned up pretty quickly.
And the second question, just in looking at this invoice, seems like the traffic control is more expensive than the actual work itself? Am I reading that correctly? It says traffic control, six thousand dollars, the pavement is fifty-seven hundred?
Well, you can, and let's blame the county instead of the state, but, yeah, I mean, basically, it's going to be multiple-day land closures. When we do a land closure and we have a company come out, it's a couple thousand dollars to do it, so, yeah, it, it's going to cost what it's going to cost, and we've got to make sure those guys are safe out there, because six thousand dollars versus someone getting dinged on our dime, I'll pay the six thousand dollars every time. I'm sure you would agree.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, proposed land swap with the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County. Does somebody...
I make the motion approve.
Mr. York.
Yeah, I guess if we could just take a second to talk about...
Yeah, let's take a second.
I'll just take a second. Is that okay?
You'd like to say a few words?
That's okay. So, basically, this is, what we brought forward is just basically the, the starting point, so here's all the locations, so, I mean, there's a thousand ways to skin this cat, but we've, we've talked about just swapping a couple of properties, this A property here, this is what we need to be able to finish this Harvey project, the one that you guys just approved the design and construction management for. There's this G property here and H property, those are the ones that we would get and with it, and then we would hand over this property here, eleven, and, can't remember off the top of my head what the other one is, but, I mean, this is really the first look that we had of what we could do, because otherwise, I mean, like I said, there's a hundred ways to do this, we could go back and ask them for, and none of these memos print it off, we could, we could go back and ask them for a lot of different things, we could ask them for, you know, more property, like the B and the C and the D, but this is just our first, this was our first shot at it, was just to take basically three properties that they, that they owned, and we would give them two properties, they would get more land in the, land in return, though, so.
What, I want to ask a question before we get rolling here. So what was the general purpose, and I don't know, maybe I was missing some information? Much like the one on the looped water thing? I got two lists of property, and it says we want to exchange property.
Yeah, okay, so the...
Period.
Yeah. Okay, so the A property is one eighty-four Forest View, and when we asked for, we kind of went to them and said, "This is what we're going to do on the Harvey project, and we want to run a pipe through here, and the pipe's going to be, you know, five feet, we want a five-foot wide, you know, by eighty feet or something like, long area." And they, as they did with some of the other projects, properties that we owned earlier, was, "Okay, if you want an easement, that's fine, you're going to pay for the easement." So the easement calculation came out to be right around ten thousand-ish dollars. And the people from the Forest Preserve District, and I can demand them for doing this, was, "Wait, let's not take their money, let's figure out a way to swap properties so that they own, that we would own that A parcel and that, and then we would just switch it with somebody else, switch it with another parcel." So the A parcel was the big one. H and G along Edgbrook, those were kind of, hey, let's just get those, they were really the other two patchworks over there on that side of the, that side of the creek. We maintain all the properties, we mow them all, that was the agreement when we did the Addison Road sidewalk project, so we mow all those properties already. So it doesn't mean that our guys go from eight and they get to F and they stop and they go around till seven and mow again, you know, we just continually work on all those properties in there. But for legality sakes and a little bit more ease of moving along, try to clean up the patchwork as much as we can, and put as many, many like, like projects together, so.
All right, makes sense. Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley, did you have a question?
The Forest Preserve Board approve of this already, or no?
No, the, nobody has approved anything. This was a concept. They asked us to take the first stab at it, so what I will do now is if, if our board is in agreement, I will write a letter to the Forest Preserve District, my contact at the staff level, and say, "Hey, this is what we were thinking, we agree, we agree with you that we need to do a land swap, these, this is our proposal, either you bring it back to me and we'll work on something different, or if that's, if you guys are good to go with that at your level, then you guys can present it to the Forest Preserve District, and then it'll come back to us."
Go ahead. So it was worked at, what you propose in here is from staff level at the Forest Preserve right now?
I had not given this to Forest Preserve staff level yet. I wanted to make sure that you guys were on board with land swap. I wasn't going to go sell our property to somebody without you guys having some say in it.
Probably a good idea.
A little bit on my part. Yeah, otherwise, we had to pay, we had to pay the easement in order to do the Harvey project.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So first off, the Forest Preserve comes back and tells us we've got to pay ten grand, then give them bill for us mowing their lawn. Second off, second off, the thing is, guys, we need to, we need to move this, we need to move this forward, because if I'm not mistaken, Harvey's already went off a bid, and we just awarded a contract for H.R. Green, so the longer we delay this, and, and, right, and let's, so let's move forward. I don't see how we could turn this away. We've got to fix the problem.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
We don't have a second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any more questions? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Too late.
No, it isn't.
You abstained?
Yep.
He does. Next is street name signed purchase from Traffic Control and Protection of Bartlett, Illinois in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That is my motion. Any questions? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, approval of a contract for the fiscal year 2018 sanitary sewer rehabilitation, design and construction observation with RJN Group in an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Art made a motion, I second.
Okay, next is purchase of 2017 Ford Escape through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative and Curry Motors, amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. The last one, we already did. Now, items to be considered at future meetings, new Public Works building study in May, ComEd Ash Street to be determined, stormwater cost share to be determined, Prairie Light Poles to be determined, Veterans Park Memorial to be determined. Wow, there's a lot of hands. Mayor please.
When we say Prairie Light Poles, where are we talking exactly? From Foster all the way to the new three ninety?
I don't believe that is what we're talking about. I believe what we're talking about, I believe that should just be more like streetlight poles, I think that was the Irving Park Road streetlight project.
Oh, that's the, that's the black poles on Irving Park.
Yes, if you want to talk part of Prairie Lights...
At some point, and I know we've pretty much done the budget and probably don't have the money this coming year, but at some point, I saw the lights coming back past Courtyard and everything from the three ninety, and now we're going to have a big empty hole in between, it'll be nice to finish that stretch at some point, and I know this is going to become a budget item, so, you know, this can be way down the road.
Other questions? Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, sometime in the near future, I would like the video gaming revenue deposited into the water fund, want that back on the agenda.
That's finance.
That's not this one.
No, I understand that, but we can't do it...
I know the guy in finance, maybe I'll talk to him.
I got a guy, he'll take care of it, don't worry about it.
Are there any other questions? Alderman Messina?
Just wanted to talk to you off on about Connor Street at...
Yeah, I got to talk to you after this.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
When it says to be determined date, Veterans Park, we have talked about that several times, so, I mean, can we put a date on it, Dean, when, when we're going to talk about?
Well, that's what they're...
I mean, it's two years down the line, we've been talking about this.
Do we have money in the butcher?
Mr. Murm.
Yeah, we're working on kind of establishing our summer schedule and our summer docket, so I would assume we're going to have dates on quite a, I know for a fact, the light poles have a date, the ComEd Ash Street is going to have a date within the next month or two, the new Public Works study has the date, I mean, these are going to fill in with dates this, this season.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? I make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
Questions?